For um patients when we're gathering. And so tonight is our regularly scheduled Tuesday, once a month, committee of the whole meeting. We're all board members that are available, you know, we we need to be attended. Um, we're glad to be here. We have, you know, interesting presentations for those of us um that will listen to this on our live stream tomorrow on our YouTube channel or on channel one eighty-seven. We hold our committee of the whole meetings and we um get really great information from a variety of presentations that allow school board members to um ask questions, get more information. And and generally, it's just um an opportunity for both our presenters, school board members in our community, to uh really see the things happening in ISD seven oh nine. So I call this July twelfth, twenty twenty-two committee of the whole, monthly committee of the whole meeting to order at six twenty. We typically do not take role. Uh, it's not an official, or or do we?
We do.
Oh, we do. Okay, we do typically take role. So I'll turn it over to Clerk Oswald to take role.
Member Eater, here. Member Kirby?
Here.
Member Loffer Kemp, here. Chair Lopold?
Here.
I am here. Member Sedoski, here. Member Sandholm?
Here.
Super Tenemakis?
Present.
Assistant Super Tenemans?
Present.
There is no Deputy Clerk Eric.
Oh, cake, cake.
Each our directors ever, it's here. And Board Secretary Carol?
Here.
And our student rep, excuse me, at the forum.
Thank you. And and at the committee of the whole, um, our agenda items are listed. We don't, we don't necessarily approve or or vote on our agenda to accept it. Um, so um, we do have agenda items and tonight, though, we do have something to add to the agenda, which I cleared with the MSBA just minutes before we started, that allows us to add uh items to our agenda. So where would you like to place um the item? We're, we're going to look at a student handbook update on Hazy.
That's correct, and we can place it right after the secondary scheduling task force committee, as there is. We don't have a presenter.
Okay, sounds good. So, that being said, then, uh, we will continue on our agenda and we are at Agenda Item Three B, informational items, and we have a presentation on the science adoption changes.
That's correct, and I would like to call to the table our Director of Elementary Education, Mrs. Parks. And? And?
And Laura.
Jim Laura.
I have the history. She asked me to sit with her.
I was gonna say.
I have the history behind all this.
So I'll turn it up to uh, well, Jen, Brenda, welcome.
When I see that you uh put up the document, so you had a document attached to the agenda, uh, which is just kind of an overview of uh what we'll be discussing tonight. Um, as you know, there's new science standards that have, um, that are coming out and will be implemented. It's actually gonna be a staggered, staggered implementation over the next few years. Uh, we'll be starting this next fall with third grade and then it'll be um full implementation twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. The next couple of years will be um coming out into the schools. But we did a pilot last year, as you know, um, and it was not a real comprehensive pilot. It was our COVID year. Um, a lot of teachers were hesitant to take on something like that in addition to what they were doing um for kids and remote learning and.
Everything else that they faced last year.
This is actually more of a review than a pilot.
Last year?
Yeah, okay.
So, thank you. See, that's why I have our next.
It was actually more of a review process and then there were so few teachers that were really engaged in the review process that we wanted to have an opportunity to look at the materials a little more in depth with more people, which is why we decided to move forward with the pilot. So it wasn't really a pilot, but it was more of a review.
So then.
This year was a pilot. This, this year was a pilot and we had great participation. A lot of teachers participated. Um, and in the end, um, the SABIS, um, the science curriculum was chosen. Last year, that was also um the one that you learned about in April, was that curriculum? Because they were gonna move forward with that, but then decided to do this pilot. In the end, it became the one that they chose again. So that was great. There's consistency there. Um, the unfortunate thing is what you can see from the proposal is like everything over the last year, inflation has taken a toll on what they're able to do as far as prices concerned. The price has raised significantly on curriculum due to paper supply shortages, um, shipping costs, I'm I'm sure manufacturing, everything. Um, we've tried to negotiate with them as much as we could and they worked with us a lot, believe it or not. You're willing to see these figures. Um, and so we feel good that we've done a lot of of work trying to get it down, but still, as you can see, um, last year, they were at um five hundred ninety-one thousand two, two hundred and six dollars. And then if you look on the second page, there's a significant increase in the prices, which overall for K eight is about two hundred and eight thousand dollars. So um percentage-wise, if you look at the gas pumps, you're probably looking about the same percentage increase there too. And that's just, it's affected our curriculum purchases too. So we just wanted you to be aware um that that's what has happened to the cost of that science implementation, the curriculum, the why. Um, we worked, Joan worked feverishly and others on working with um the vendor to try to get as much as we could taken off. They really didn't have much to work with because of their costs now, so. I feel like I should have a clarification here, just just so you're aware. Um, so the science standards have been out for a couple of years. Um, but what COVID did was push back the implementation cycle of the science standards. We thought we were going to be having to push the third grade, starting with their kits this year, and then that got delayed again another year, which is why we did not make that purchase at the end of last year when we came to the board and said, this is what we wanted to do. And it bought us another year, which also then bought us time to engage more teachers in the process with the pilot. So it bought us all of that at a cost. And so, but we wanted to just make sure you were clear why we didn't make that purchase um when we had put it forth last year. There was, there was a reason behind why we didn't do it.
And what's the life cycle of a curriculum, like of this for K through five? Like, how, how long does this curriculum last, these kits and everything like this?
So the kids will have to have some replenishment. Um, you know, that's just a normal science kit. There's a lot, lot of replenishment. Um, this is kid-based, but there's also digital components. And I feel like the digital components are like seven years. It's, it's where, where I think it really is. Um, into the public schools, that doesn't mean that it would only be for seven years. I'm just saying. Um, you know, along with other things, you'll see textbooks that are considerably older than, than what their life cycle really typically would be.
And the MDE cycle for reviewing is ten years for standards?
Science standards at ten years, that's ridiculous.
Every standard area. Every, every content area is reviewed every ten years.
So I have a question too, and this thing, you, you're probably aware, we were using FOS kits before, correct?
Uh, FOS is what they're currently using and we're going to be shifting to this other Elevate Science.
How long had we been on the FOS kits?
Um, that historically has been in the district for many, many, many years in different versions. So it was, it was like version three to version five. I mean, I don't remember how many versions ago we had, but we've had them for a significant amount of time.
Back to the money side of this, though. So had we set aside that money that's just been waiting to be spent?
Yeah.
But now we just need to add to that.
Yeah, so this is, you know, um, something that we bring forth to the board for approval and because of the significant increase in the cost, we wanted to bring this forward again to the board for approval.
Are there any other districts that you're aware of that are using this, Minneapolis, St. Paul, or?
Uh, you know, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm a little separated from it this year.
There are local districts who adopted this for these new science standards locally. I know up on the range.
Thank you.
Just as a follow-up, based on the two questions you've asked, I do think it's important for us as a district, now that we're getting into a better place financially, for us to make sure that we are investing in relevant and timely curriculum for, for our students. And I think that that's something that is, um, hasn't been fully tended to, partly because of the financial concerns over a long period of time, but it is important that, that we do tend to that because many of our textbooks are quite old. And um, I think both from a pedagogical teaching techniques perspective, but also is the content relevant? You know, we see the James Webb photos coming out on, from the, the, the new telescope. And I think about science, if, if our science is only updated every ten years, there's, there's a lot of changes in ten years. And making sure that we have those updates is really important. So I appreciate that, uh, both the teaching, learning and equities departments work on this, as well as the board for, for thinking of this from a long-range allocation of resources, because we have to do.
Can you share anything, can you share anything with us about the, the elementary science teachers and the team that helped pilot this and or make this choice?
Um, so I had been separated from the pilot this year just because of my role in the secondary. Um, I did meet with, so Erin Samala is our science content specialist and Erin had pulled together the middle school and the elementary last year when I was Director of Curriculum Instruction and I worked with them. Um, and so there were teachers from across the district, but there, there weren't as many that were able to be engaged. So, you know, I saw maybe four of them that came in quite regularly to, to review kits and to, to put it against our rubric that we were, were judging it on, um, which we just felt was like such a small sample size. When, when the state allowed us to push it out another year, we thought maybe getting more people to look at it.
But it's all multiple grade levels and multiple sites.
Yeah, it was, it was different sites, but again, it was, and, and there were people that were giving feedback, like just from what they could see on the website, but weren't coming in because of COVID. They didn't want to come in and they didn't want to be in the space looking at the kits with other people. And so that, that, it was a hardship to really be reviewing science materials last year. And then again, I, I'm not really sure where, where that sat with um Erin this year. Um, I know he loved the process and he and Dale worked together. Dale Usman, we're working together with that.
And this year, we had training from both of the offerings. That's the Oop Mifflin, Harcourt was one of them. And then um this Elevate Science was the other one. And so both of those vendors came in and trained the teens, multiple grade levels. It was a big team. I don't even know how many people were on the team. Um, so it got a really good, um, and across the sites. So it really was a good measure of which one they preferred and it was heavily towards this one. So I felt, I felt good about that.
It was a good process. He did a great job. He did a nice job. Really great job.
And Clerk Oswald?
I have two questions. Um, so is, how over, how much over budget is this really? Is it the two hundred and eight?
Two hundred and eight thousand.
Okay, that's how much over budget. Where's the money coming from for the overage and is it gonna affect future curriculum?
It's gonna come from the money that has been set aside for curriculum adoptions and yes, it will impact future, future um curriculum adoptions.
And I'm all for moving away from FOS kits because there was no accountability in the use of FOS kits. And so I would like to know how accountability of teachers teaching this curriculum is going to work.
Well, they'll all be trained on it, first of all, because it'll take a, a training and it's gonna be staggered over time. So like I said, we're gonna start with third grade. Um, and then I forget which grades are gonna come next year and then the next year after that. But um, so it'll have, trainings will be over the next couple of falls for different grade levels. Um, and they'll be heavily supported by Erin and the vendor. Um, and then, you know, it is an expectation that you teach the standards that Minnesota, you know, and we ensure that we do. So they'll be responsible for teaching these standards through this curriculum.
I just didn't know if there's a system of accountability that, that will be implemented in this because that's, that's exactly what you say, it's supposed to happen now and it doesn't, so. And it, it's not, I, I don't want to blame any teacher or point any fingers at anybody because I know how overwhelming the last few years have been and just getting through, it's been really hard and difficult. But, you know, kids love science and maybe they only reason they show up.
Part of past processes, your accountability, just to kind of give you that a little bit of answer there. You know, like, um, a lot of the assessments that align to our report cards are, are tied to, you know, the units that are being, being done. Um, and so that's gonna have to be another process beyond this. Would be like, how then, how are we reporting this out on our, on our report cards? And so we, we do have standards-based report cards, which means we have to look at where the standards are now sitting and then seeing where they fit into the reporting. So that'll be work that Erin will help lead along with Dale. They'll, they'll lead that work.
Right, in addition to the ongoing professional development, clearly, obviously, the classroom teacher is the one who, you know, makes all of the decisions regarding what's gonna happen instructionally. And the building principal is the one who also supports, uh, you know, teachers to make, to ensure that high quality instruction is being provided to our students. And you also know that, you know, we really are trying to revamp our, um, our professional learning communities, our POC teams, and that's where, through that teaming process, that's where the real teachers themselves will collaboratively to, you know, make some decisions on, on science lessons, you know, ELA and, and all the other areas of instruction. So um, we rely on our teachers and our principals to ensure that instruction is being provided and that's what accountability comes in.
I think too, to, to supplement what you said, or supplement what you said, thinking about our, our structure with having Jen and Brenda as two separate directors working with principals, whereas in the previous, previously, it would be hard for one person to supervise all schools and be the know, know-all, be-all of, of, of every subject area. Uh, Brenda can work with individual principals at the elementary level and Jen can work with individual principals at the secondary level to make sure that there's in a way, a clear and valid curriculum for everybody that it's, that it's implemented with fidelity. And just like different classroom teachers or different students are in different places, sometimes different schools or different principals are in different places, but it's, it's uh the work that they're doing along with Mr. Mons, with the Center for Educational Leadership in how are we, are we raising that level of, of work at each of our schools? So I'm, we haven't seen that engine in place yet because we've, we've been in the COVID world for the past two years, but I, I'm, uh, I, I think that this is something that's really gonna have some profound impact on instruction for our students.
Amber, Laura, Kim?
Thank you. Um, Erin Samala presented to us last year.
Yeah, he and I came to you like in April, I think.
Yeah, and so I was just gonna say, I, I, I remember at Sandholm, you asked that, the question about who was involved and I remember asking a similar question to Erin last year and, and also just kind of knowing him and his involvement within the district on science curriculum for a long time, that I have all the confidence he will help lead this effort uh and, and continue to lead it. So, and, and I'm sure he will be involved, right, in, in the trainings and things like that. And so, um, I, uh, I, I, I remember at the time, you know, kind of sharing a little bit about how he was approaching getting feedback and getting feedback during COVID, uh, as well. So, um, tell him thank you, uh, from the obvious. And then, um, my other question was, um, uh, the, the, the teachers who were involved with the, you didn't use the word testing, sampling, um, what was the word you used?
Piloting?
Yeah, piloting, thank you. Um, will they be involved with the training of other teachers as well or involved? I know in.
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that, but that's a really good idea. Thank you.
No, you know, I just know over the years of having kids in the district, when there's been a similar thing and my kids have been involved with some of the, or the classes they were in in piloting, that, that was a role that their teachers played and so I just was curious if that would happen.
Yeah, and this, this rollout of a staggered implementation is helpful. Yeah. Because Erin and other teachers, Dale, they'll be able to kind of focus in on a grade level. And then I think next year it's two or three and then the next year after that, a few more. Um, so there'll be more of a focus. So I think that's beneficial too.
Thank you. Thank the, the, the staff that were involved with piloting it.
Yeah, sure.
So, yeah, one more question then. Um, so the proposal, as I made it here to be, we are looking to purchase K two eight. Right now, I mean, are we gonna, are we gonna delay the, the middle school side of this?
That's not even purchased.
And maybe face future costs?
No, they've already been purchased.
They've already been.
So we had purchased them in advance.
Okay.
Before we got word about the delay with, from the state. So they had already, we'd already made that purchase. So they've been in storage for a year and next year they'll be implementing in sixth grade. Um, is there sciences in sixth grade? I think, yeah. So they'll be, they did that swap of grade levels. So next year, they already have the materials in hand.
And the staggered start has to do with when the test will take place with the new standards, which is twenty-three, twenty, like twenty-four, twenty-five? And then you backwards plan. So when will those fifth graders have to know all that information? So third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, they'll have three years under their belt before they have to test on the new standards, as well as eighth graders and backwards planning. So sixth grade, seventh grade, they'll have eighth grade. So it's kind of backwards planning when that class.
Has to do that assessment.
Will have to take that assessment. So we're not waiting until that implementation year because if we did, then they wouldn't have the background knowledge.
I, I, I give all the staggered start and all this. So I'm just curious still, so I'm confused about, they've already been purchased. So we're paying more for something that's already been purchased?
No, they were, they were a different company. So this is just the elementary Elevate Science SABIS part.
This is just.
And, and the increase for K eight total because of the elementary is going from five hundred something thousand to not seven ninety-nine. So it's a two hundred and eight thousand dollar increase. You had approved it all in one chunk, so.
Right.
So Joan was trying to show you in a comparison to what you had approved, you know, that. So the, the increase is just at the elementary level. The, the, the middle school stuff sort of been taken care of.
And that's in the waiting for its implementation.
Yeah, and we will be still looking at um science adoption materials for the high school. We still haven't had that process yet. So there's still more to come. I'll, I'll be coming back to you again with science. We'll have another conversation for all you lovely science people.
No, this is, this is all good because as we've already learned, this is long overdue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I'm glad to hear that, uh, we are moving forward.
Yeah.
At this time.
I just have a technical question quick. So when you're looking at the textbook adoption for sixth through eighth grade, it does, does it integrate with more than just Canvas in case we switch learning management systems?
Um.
I would assume it'd probably be the big ones, like Blackboard, Canvas, all those.
Yeah, so there's always components if you're switching, if you're switching that, that management, student management system, but it should, yeah, they, they usually work. There might be workarounds or something. I'm not really sure. We didn't, we didn't vet that part out, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next. Our next.
We're agenda, by the way. Sometimes agenda.
Our next presentation will be done by Mrs. Sherri Williams, who is our early childhood head, and Head Start Coordinator. Um, she's going to, um, raise a presentation on the thing related to the Head Start deficiency.
As our governing board, usually I'm here to celebrate the strengths of our program. Shoot, I'm gonna try really hard not to cry. God, I really practiced hard too. I'm gonna pull it together. Um, today I'm gonna share a struggle. And I will get it out eventually. Um, anytime there's a non-compliance or a deficiency in our program, we are required to share that with you, our governing board, and we have been found to have a deficiency. So I've shared with you the definition of what a deficiency is in Head Start program. And uh, this is relating to an incident that happened last spring uh, in which impacted the safety of a child. At any time, the safety of a child is, um, the safety of other people too, but the safety of a child is, um, brought to the attention of the Office of Head Start that it's an automatic deficiency in the program. So, um, so, uh, non-compliance is something that can happen when we are not exactly following the performance standards and a deficiency is considered more serious than that because it involves the safety of the child or all these other things that are just in the presentation. When a deficiency happens, um, an early childhood specialist and a grantee specialist get assigned to our program to provide support and to help us determine if there's anything that we could do to prevent future instances of this happening. So the team is coming to our program next week um, to go over all of our policies and procedures, our professional development plans, just to ensure that we are doing everything that we can to support our staff so that incidences such as this don't happen. Uh, there's a deadline, uh, usually it's a thirty-day deadline to correct a deficiency when you ask for an extension. Um, so they have given us till September thirtieth of twenty twenty-two to correct this deficiency and will, um, truly provide any support that we need to make sure that we have got this corrected by that time. That's what I've got. I've shared with you the documents that I feel we need to see.
Question?
I, I would just say that, um, as I said to you early, the incident happened and the policies and procedures that we have in place make sure that we followed what we were supposed to do. So that is what I appreciate the most about this and I still have full faith in our program and the people and everything about it. I'm, I am much sympathetic to the parents and to the child for sure. It happened what was supposed to happen following the incident happened and we were accountable and I appreciate that.
I too would just like to reiterate that, that we know how close to your heart to hold our Head Start programming and the, the education of our, our youngest students. And I know that, that anytime that there's a, uh, mistake in the system, that, that we always try to learn from that mistake. And I know it's not, it's not reflective of you or your leadership. And I know that we will move forward and be stronger because of this. And I too have empathy for the, the parent, the child, the parents and child in this situation and, um, and know that we'll, we'll be stronger because of what we learned from this process. So thank you.
Our next, uh, agenda item is a presentation by Brenda Laura again. Uh, and it is an update related to our secondary scheduling task force.
Hi.
Hi.
This has been a long time coming, um, having to talk about the secondary schedule. Um, so there was some information that was provided to you, um, in your board packet, giving you a lot of historical perspective, um, because this is work that had been done in two thousand seventeen and I see there are still faces on here, Rosie, I know you were one of them and Alana, I think you were here at that time too, right? That, um, um, had gone through that process with, um, members of our, um, staff in the district. And it was a very comprehensive process back in two thousand seventeen, where recommendations were actually brought to the board about potential schedule changes. Um, and nothing just had been decided upon that. And so we've been sitting with the six-period day for, um, gosh, I wanna say it's been ten years at least, right? Longer than that?
I think maybe more than five.
Oh, is it that long? Okay.
It's hard to remember when.
I, I, I don't have the historical perspective as, as to when we went to six-period day. Um, what, why we're coming back to this now? Um, so as I talked to you last year when I was Director of Curriculum Instruction, we have the art standards that have changed significantly enough where, um, we thought we were gonna be out of compliance this year. I mean, I came to you and said, last, last year I said, we're gonna be out of compliance and I needed you to be aware of it because that's, you know, it's, you know, to comply with MDE and the standards. But then we were gifted another year. So I knew this year that we had to get to work on addressing how we're going to be implementing those, um, art standards. It really impacts us at seventh and eighth grade. It's where the, where the impact is really felt the most at the middle school level. So what the, um, what the difference is with the art standards is that they used to be banded type of standards, so they were in grade bands, which means they kind of, they group them together like seventh and eighth grade. By the end of that timeframe, you have to meet these, meet these requirements. Um, they're now separated out by grade levels and so each grade level has its own set of standards. And then the other piece that they added in the mix was that they are, um, they're, they're, they're saying that schools need to offer in three concentration areas and require two. So kids have to take two, but are offered three. They have to be offered three. Um, and the areas are, um. And the areas are visual arts, media arts, music, theater arts, and dance arts. I'm impressed, I remembered all of them in one shot. So right now, currently, we really are strong in the visual arts component at our, at our elementaries and our middle schools. We're very, very strong in the music area. We do not have a real strength in, media arts, I think, is there in pieces, not necessarily as its own little strand, but in, in exploratory pieces. We don't have a dance arts and a theater arts component at all. So we're, we are limited in what, in what we have been able to offer to our students. We have art offered in sixth grade, and we feel like we're covered pretty much in sixth grade, but seventh grade, we don't have any art, we just have music. And in eighth grade, it's an option for kids as one option, and kids may or may not choose art. So we need to do something about our, about our schedule in order to make room for us to provide art instruction for our students. So, that being said, we are looking at some different proposals that were put forth back from two thousand and seventeen. So I got a group of people together, and we're not starting by recreating the wheel. We don't have as much time to do this work. So I'm not starting and creating, recreating the wheel, I'm just saying we need to start somewhere, and this is where we're going to start, is looking at what we already have put forth in the past, and, and see what the recommendations are moving forward. So Assistant Superintendent Bonds, myself, and Anna Cocket are leading the work with a group from the D F T. So we have Ethan Fisher that's been involved in it, we have teachers from the content areas like art and music, we've got some industrial tech teachers, we've got some different teachers representing, we have counselors on the committee that we have pulled in, and then we have the principals that, we have three of the principals that are engaging with us in these conversations as well. So I just wanted to give you an update that I've met twice now with this group, and we are looking at putting forth three options as potentials for, for a review and consideration, but we need to, we need to figure out which direction we're going to be going to. So we're going to be putting forth three different plans. That was the direction that Assistant Superintendent Bonds really was hoping that we'd come to, is like a three-plan that we can bring forth to the board. I feel that I need to bring you these three plans in August, so I'm trying to bring you along as I go here. So this is gonna be a quick process, and I wanted you to be aware that in August I'll be coming to you with the three plans that the committee would like for you to take a look at and review. I am meeting with Simone tomorrow to start doing a cost analysis of what these three plans would look like, and we're trying to put some mockups together and do our due diligence, and how many minutes kids would be in certain core content and different things, and how many electives that would open up for kids. And so I'm gonna bring to you in the, in August. We have really a limited amount of time to make some decisions because of our course catalog timelines, so I'm, I'm just, I know that you, you need some time to be thinking about things, but I also know that in order for us, I mean, if we're making a significant change, we're gonna have to have time to do things with our course catalog. Danielle Dorn on the backside with Infinite Campus, if we were to, and I'm not saying that this is what we're going to do, don't anybody quote me, but if we were gonna move significantly from like semesters to trimesters, there's a whole lot of work on their backbone that needs to happen, which needs to be done in, like, needs to be done, like, the work needs to be completed in December, so she can roll the calendar forward after that, which means we need to have some decisions made like September, maybe very beginning of October, so that we can get that work done. So that's why I'm coming to you tonight, just to let you know that this committee's working, I'm gonna be meeting with them again end of July, maybe beginning of August. We're gonna be coming to the board, you know, I'll talk to you again at the committee the whole, I'll come back to you again at the August board meeting with whatever shifts or anything that you want me to make from that information, but we're just gonna need to continue to have the conversation. It might be a quicker decision than what we normally would do.
But this is for twenty-three, twenty-four?
It is for twenty-three, twenty-four. It's not for next school year, it's for the, the following school year, but all of these things have to happen next year in order for us to do this rollout of a new schedule.
Brenda Larmour again. Same to her.
Yeah, I, I will, I, I look forward to hearing other questions from the board. I just want to, I say thank you for leading this. I know member Peter and I were sitting in the Quality Steering Committee meeting when many of the people who participate, teachers and principals, kind of in this discussion and ideas for how to move forward and giving you some thoughts and directions. So it's exciting to be at this place and knowing you've already had two meetings in a very short amount of time.
It was made, wasn't it? I thought that meeting was made.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we had done some, I, I should say we had two meetings where it came together personally. We did do some preliminary work, two other additional meetings where virtually I, I shared with them the journey that had happened in two thousand and seventeen, and I shared with them the new art standards. So we did some preliminary work, and I gave them homework, so we've, we've come pretty far in a short period of time. I, I just need to really sit down now and get some cost analysis done, so that I can bring forward even better information for you all.
And I, I would just, just one other thing, I remember Kirby, you mentioned a couple of us, member Kirby was on the board at, and, yeah, at that time as well.
Close to Dr. Carey.
Yep, yep, yep.
So there, there were a few of us or other board members that if you wanna tap into what we remember.
Maybe I'll.
Will your plans that you bring forward to us include not necessar, not necessarily the language, but commitments from the teachers and pairs and all the various unions vowing to support those plans with contract language adjustments?
So that, that is the tricky part about, about adjusting the schedule, which is why we are engaging with the D F T, because they're the ones that really probably have the biggest, biggest impact on, you know, looking at these options. We are going into contract negotiations again, so the timing of it seems to be at, at a pretty decent timeframe, because next year you'll be in contract negotiations. The problem is the decision that needs to be made on the front end, which might mean early M O U negotiation. I'm not sure where, where you'd go with that. I guess I'll, I'll turn that over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
You're, you're spot on in terms of the timing, so that's why we are, we keep bringing the, using the phraseology of bring the board along, we're trying to make sure we bring the board along, we bring the community along, and we have already started and made a commitment that we are working with our teachers' union to really be a part of the process to make sure they thoroughly aware of how this is going to impact their day and what this will look like, so they can, you know, be in support of whatever decision is made. So this is not being done in isolation without teachers in consideration, and that doesn't mean that other bargaining groups will not be brought into conversations, and because it potentially may impact some of their work as well. But we're, we're gonna have those conversations. We're starting off with the schedule design itself, make sure our teachers are fully impressed of the impact on their day, and they will make sure others are brought along. We're bringing you all along, because there is a significant potentially fiscal impact of any one of these decisions that we're going to make. There's other ramifications of making these decisions in terms of the structure of the day, the opportunities, I'm thinking about the positive, these are all positive things, you know, it's not the negatives, you know, the structure of the day, the opportunities that could be provided for students, so if it is, since we're talking about secondary, when we think about the scheduling changes that could happen, now we're, we are striving also to embed the art standards, but we're also trying to figure out how do we provide other opportunities for students to have some exploration and to actually take classes they have interest in. So through a potential schedule or change, students might have the opportunity to take more electives and select classes they are actually interested in. So we're trying to accomplish other things as part of this as well. But everything we, everything that's been considered, it's definitely a price tag, and there's some other ramifications of decisions, that's why we're making sure the board is all along, and you're gonna have opportunities to ask questions. We want the community to be aware that we are engaged in these conversations, and we are, as part of the committee, trying to figure out a, our communication plan with the community, like, besides the board, how do we make sure that the community is brought along with us and they can start asking questions sooner than later as well?
My, my biggest concern is, is the board falling in love with the plan, and the teachers don't like that plan, that sort of thing. So, you know, I, you know, do we wait till contract negotiations to try to hammer it out, and they still say no? And yet we've had to make all these decisions and change everything to make it happen in a ti, on a timeline. So at what point are the teachers going to be given a chance to say yea, your name within this timeline? I'm assuming before February, when the student handbook or the, the course catalog needs to be out there and being used.
Well, they're being brought along, I'm sorry, they're being brought along now during this process, because they are part of the development of these actual schedules. So there's ongoing communication at this point in time through the D F T in terms of how they are communicating, what they're communicating to their membership. Everyone is aware that there's a team working on this work, and so, again, we're trying to figure out like what other things do we need to make sure we, we have in place to make sure that there's no misunderstanding, there's a full awareness of what's happening, the questions teachers may need to ask their representatives through the association, that they can be a part of things that we need to focus on at the committee. But during the actual committees, we, we're already thinking about those things. We're, we're having discussions on how this might impact future negotiations without it being a conversation related to negotiations, because this is not a negotiation, right? So we're trying to make sure that we are thinking about those things and, you know, trust me, the teachers and Ethan, you know, they're asking those questions and we're putting those things up front right away.
Well, I'm very aware that being on the team doesn't mean necessarily mean agreement with the team.
Correct.
So that's, that's the thing.
There's a lot of union members, and it's a very small team, so, yeah.
And so that's, that's just like, you know, part that, that draws this question, because, like I said, you know, just because they're there doesn't mean that, that, that means it's an automatic yes, you know, we explain it, how it's gonna affect them, they have to go sell it to their membership, and, and their membership can still say no, and that, and that sort of thing. So I really want to make sure that, that, that we have some sense of, yes, this is, that these plans are something that are doable and agreeable. That's, that's all I'm asking, because I, I honestly don't want to put us into some kind of crisis, you know, come, come April, you know, that we've scheduled everybody for, you know, a trimester or whatever it is gonna be, and, and then all of a sudden we have to go back to exactly what it is now and, and be in non-compliance. You know, that's, that's the thing I'm concerned about.
But you're spot on, and, and, and I'm gonna call you next, I'm member Lock, Ethan has made, and leadership has made that very clear too, that, you know, that even after we develop this, whatever we are developing, membership has to ultimately approve it if it's, you know, as it goes through the negotiations. So that's very clear. And also their fear and our concern is too, that we may come up with something that we believe is the best option for our students, and yet the price tag might be so significant that it may prevent us from moving forward with the most ideal, so we might have to end up settling on something that is much better than what we have now and provide more opportunities for kids, but may not be the catalyst version that we would, you know, be striving for. And so, so we're, we're being thoughtful about the fiscal impact, we're being thoughtful about the fact that it's gonna impact a lot of people, especially the teachers. And again, we're here now because we're trying to make sure we bring everyone along this journey sooner than later. Remember Lock again?
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, and that's, I guess, why I wanted to jump in right away to be really clear with the rest of the board that, you know, your two representatives on the Quality Steering Committee were listening, asking questions, and also hearing a lot of good discussion from, again, principals as well as teachers at that particular meeting. And, and I know, I, I feel pretty confident that there was interest back in May for a deeper reach as the process was moving out to more staff and more people. And then I guess I would just say, how I view it as a school board member is, I might love one of the proposals, but, you know, I will be looking at that recommendation from this committee who's dived into it a lot more than I probably have, and I may, you know, I need to be careful when that, as that process is coming out, that just because I like this one thing, it might not be what is recommended for all the different reasons that Assistant Bonds had mentioned. And then I'll just, you know, truth be told, my kids have been in the school district for a long time, so my oldest was in a seven-period day, my other ones were in a six-period day, so, you know, I actually have a lot to kind of compare with and, from just a personal perspective and have, so anyways, I, I will be looking forward to, just like when we went through this a few years ago, kind of seeing the work that's, so much has happened at that time and that you're using, but this new work with a new group of people. So, thank you.
Sure.
So just a couple of things. I do remember in two thousand and seventeen being brought those options, and, and actually the, the committee, you know, sharing what just came out of somebody else, that the price tag was, was really high on all the options. And so it's not like we didn't think that there was a need for some, some schedule changes, it just seemed like in two thousand and seventeen, the options that this committee came up with just were not fiscally, you know, able for us to, to engage in any of them. And it was, it was sad, because that committee had met and had honestly dived into the, the work of that, and then we didn't do anything with it. This, my second question is just, so we're, right now, you are really just talking about a, a middle school schedule change, right? I mean, I know that it's going, I mean, I know that it's gonna impact nine twelve, but for what we are doing right now with the committee and what you might bring to us in August, what you might bring to us for schedule and handbook stuff next January, is really in looking at our six, seven, eight school day?
The six, seven, eight is the immediate need for making some adjustments, yes. However, because of the impacts that it would have on the high school, we are also looking at the high school at the same time. The committee might recommend that we do something different at middle school and at high school.
For sure.
You know, so like, so I'm just gonna say, moving middle school to a trimesters would be relatively okay, easier to do. Moving high schools to a trimester would be extremely challenging because of the credits that are associated and earning credits for graduation. So, you know, that, it could be possible that we're, we're looking at two for things. We don't have to necessarily make a decision on anything for high school, but could be moving in a direction towards high school and have that awareness, but we are looking at it all together because of the impact. So if we were to say that we were gonna be cutting out something of the middle school schedule because we can't fit it in or whatever, so like, let's say we have to cut world language, that, that's one just comes to my head, it's an elective in eighth grade that we might potentially have to make a cut for. Well, what are those impacts at, at the high school? Right now, they get college and the school credit at Spanish five. So we've already done some research, and yep, we have places where we could go to get it at an earlier time, or we have the bilingual seals, you know, so we're already thinking about those impacts. If we have to cut industrial tech or families and consumer science, which are local controlled, there's no state standards, you know, those are all local standards. If we were to have to cut that, what does that do to our C T E programs down in the high school? Like, we wouldn't have that preliminary exposure, we don't know that kids would have the interest in. So those are why we're, we're making it more of a comprehensive approach, we just didn't get a middle school team together and a high school team together, we're trying to look at it as a bigger picture.
And just your conversation on how you answer that, I know that we're, we're in good hands with, because you guys know this, the same thing, I would say that with my years here at, at Duluth too, that I might not have sat on a curriculum committee, it's a lot of work, and so I always have such great respect for my colleagues that find it within their, their strengths and their gifts and their time to do that. And so when recommendations used to come, I, I've been through a lot of changes in our district, and I just supported whatever the committee decided. I, I might have wanted different things in my English thing, but if, if a committee really came to our district and our superintendent bought, and we went to a different thing, I, I got on board and, and did what all of our teachers do, is, might not be my choice, but, but I support what my committee worked hard for, because they're really smart. So, so thank you. Thanks for, and thanks to that team, that, that's a lot of work. Curriculum work is really a lot of work, and we rely on teachers to step forward, and we used to always feel guilty that I didn't always give my summers to stepping in there and doing English nine curriculum work, but I'm glad somebody is, does curriculum, you're right. I, I'm really glad that Brenda and Jen lead, that we have two directors working on curriculum, it's probably still not enough. I still think your principal work, your curriculum work, and your integration work is really too much of a job for all of you, but, but I'm glad we have two of you.
Assistant Brenda, go ahead.
You know, you go.
Okay. You sure? So I just wanted to say.
So I just wanted to say what I've, what I've noticed and appreciate is Director Larva is working very hard to make sure that this isn't just about the art standards, it's really thinking about engagement. It's thinking about what, you know, we had conversation earlier today to make sure that what we choose also has positive effect on the learning outcomes for our students, that it isn't gonna have, you know, if we, if we have just a cornucopia of a hundred electives, it's not gonna have negative impact on our literacy and math scores too. We have to, we have to think about what is the outcome. And so balancing engagement, balancing student need and interest has been key to what she's been doing as well as the facilitation of that group. And I think Mr. Bonds, as we, we, there was some, or Assistant Superintendent Bonds was very careful about making sure that the DFT was deeply involved in the process because initially there were some things that we were looking at starting and making sure that they, they, they were kind of core in the work that's being done because we can't, we can't move forward with something that isn't agreed on and also including the board. So making sure that we're, we're threading those need, threading those needles in that way is really important. Another point that I'd, I'd make is related to this as an example, but also all things labor management. We did have a meeting with our, our labor management group with President Fisher and Jim Jubenville and several members of our administrative team. And one thing we talked about is having Adele much more actively involved in some of our QSC conversations and other work so that when the work of a smaller group is coming to some consensus or making a decision or even agreeing to disagree, that we're having unified communication go out to the membership and our staff so that they understand where we're at and where we're coming from as opposed to, sometimes, you know, we walk away from the table and two people tell it from their different perspectives or, or six people or whatever it may be. Or sometimes things aren't even really, it's clearly disseminated by us or, or others. So really making sure that we have that through line of coherent, consistent communication is gonna be really important as well. So we're looking at revamping our weekly updates to some degree where we're, you know, there's the, the family version, but the staff version is gonna be modified a little more so that it's discussing some of these topics that are, that are of interest to people so that they're well informed. So thank you to the team.
Yeah, thank you. And I was just gonna say, you know, thank you for this more in-depth kind of information that you've provided today. I was really interested in hearing about it and I, I know that you're doing so much work behind the scenes, like even thinking about industrial arts and the impact of my cabin high school, I really appreciate that. You know, one of the biggest concerns that I hear from middle school parents and my own middle school students and even some of the teachers is the, that they want to see more electives in the middle school. And so I appreciate the work that you're doing.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks Jen.
Our last item is not listed, but it is the item related to our student handbook and having the opportunity for the board to start considering the updates. The board has received an email related to the updates that will be needed or will be done as it relates to our handbook. If you take a look at it, I will quickly run through it. And then there's also the adoption of our hazing policy or the inclusion or addition of our hazing policy. The board has already adopted this policy, so it's not something that is being brought for consideration or adoption. It's something that was already adopted, but it's gonna be added to the student handbook. So we want to make sure that you are aware of all of the changes to the student handbook for this year, including the addition to the handbook. So thank you Kayla for sharing that information. I thought I started, but for some reason it's not popping up. I can't see that part.
So I'm glad you're, you're giving us a new welcome letter too.
Yes.
I certainly would want it, last year's, last year's. And wanting to make it bigger?
Yes, you know.
She didn't ask, that's embarrassing.
She knew the answer. That was the answer.
Very large font.
Yes, because we wanna make sure our community members can actually see it when they are watching from home. So as, as we shared here, there's gonna be, I'll just quickly run through them, the superintendent's, the superintendent's letter will be updated. We're gonna remove members and add new members to the book itself. We have other individuals throughout the district who are no longer with us or have pursued other opportunities. And so those individuals will be removed from the handbook. And the biggest note of change is actually the adoption of, or the addition, not adoption, the addition of the hazing policy which was already adopted.
I'm sorry.
But it's not, yeah.
Sorry.
Thanks, thank you. One never knows.
I know, that's always the funny one with that, when you're eating.
I can tell you a pretty funny story.
Is this better or do you need a bigger?
No, that is perfect, that is perfect.
A little bigger for him, just a little bit.
So those are the changes that are being added, or edited for this year. And the reason we're bringing it to the board now is because of time, we wanna make sure that we have an opportunity for our print shop to have a chance to produce all of the handbooks so that they can be mailed out to families and, you know, before they begin to be here, so. Member Lockwood?
I think it's really great that you're bringing this to us, however, I don't see the need. This is just, you know, we already approved the, you know, the, the hazing policy. And so that would naturally be substituted and the rest is housekeeping items. So, you know, the fact that I don't know necessarily in the future that we need to approve something just like this, that's my personal opinion because it's, it's already been approved, what needs to be approved.
Right, and, and it's actually the handbook that's approved annually.
Right, and we would approve that anyway.
Correct, and.
When do we approve that?
This coming.
Yeah, school board.
School board. At the next meeting.
But have we seen the whole handbook yet?
No.
Do we usually?
Yes, and that's why we're providing, the only changes are the changes that you see here.
I gotcha, okay.
So that's why we, there, there are no massive changes to the handbook at all. So we're trying to make sure that for the essence of time, make sure you're aware of the edits that will be done to the handbook. And the only, again, the only major change is the addition of the hazing policy. Everything else is gonna be consistent at this point in time.
Why are we putting the hazing policy in, in our handbook?
Oh, the policies are there and it's been adopted, so we're just making sure that it's there.
It's already in the handbook, it just needs to be updated with the new one.
I gotcha, and all of the other policy, okay, so we have policies in, in our handbook?
Yep, quite a few of them, almost, yeah, all the student policy are there. I don't know who's handling up over here.
This is just a minor thing, but I've always had a dream in that handbook that we had a group school board picture in that. And I'm just wondering if that's something you would consider and if, when we have our July twentieth, next tree?
Next year, because this has to be printed as soon as it's approved by the school board.
Oh, okay.
To go in the back to school.
Okay.
This normally is supposed to be approved by the school board in June.
Okay.
Correct.
So we do, they're ready to run the presses?
Yes.
Maybe we can put it on the website or something.
Yeah, how about this?
My little dream.
Yeah, how about the website, I agree for that compromise.
We've talked about it.
We do hide it in-house too, our own print shop.
Yes, we do that, our own print shop does it, but it's five thousand seven hundred and fifty copies that need to be run. And it is well over a hundred pages.
Yeah, I've got a follow-up question to that, that's a lot of handbooks.
I agree.
Is that a state requirement or is there an option for families to opt out of the paper and opt in to the?
So that is a discussion, that is something that I brought up because one, that's a lot of postage too because of the weight and then a lot of paper because of the, the tree. And I assume most parents probably do what I would do, which is recycle it immediately and just use the electronic version.
Yeah, that would just.
So the thought is that next year we send out an opt-in letter and have people send back a request to opt in for a physical copy before we get to the point where we have to do back to school.
Yeah, and I would assume we could have some on-site for parents if they're, if they would like one.
Physical copies on site.
Can always print more, that makes sense, thank you.
Another thing we have to do is, cause we're concerned about the amount of print that's happening, the postage, things that could be saved. And technology exists, but we also have a situation where not everyone accesses technology at the same level. And as a district, we wanna be certain that we have provided every family with the handbook in case there's ever an incident, we want families to know their rights, we wanted them to know the rules and expectations. And so by sending it out to everyone, it, it at least on our end protects us and says, we can say with confidence that everyone was provided a copy, whether they read them or not, you know, that's a different thing, but we hope that all of our families would read them.
Yeah, conversely, if parents could opt out, it would automatically be sent one instead of opting in. I think that's a really.
And the, this, there's a committee that's working on the handbook and they're hoping to make it smaller and more user-friendly for the following school year.
Yes, we're working with MDE.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I, I'd just be curious what other school districts, this has came up every year and I am a paper proponent and I don't throw them on the way and I probably have them from ten years ago in a middle file someplace. But, and, and actually, I, 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 as a parent, always liked to have it there. And part of it was because I could use it as a teaching tool with my child around dress code maybe, or something like that. I know, that wasn't too much. But, so, so I, I, I would be curious though, and I, I will do some asking myself, what other school districts I have chosen to do, you know, for all the reasons it would make sense to have an opt-in or out policy. But I, 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 I think there is value to what you said about nailing out to everybody with all those other things, but, yeah.
There's always the vice sheet in there about vice too.
Any other questions related to the additions or edits? If not, it will be brought to the board for formal adoption at the end of this month.
Doesn't have to, doesn't have to print for everyone?
Well, it has to be printed by August first, so by approving it on Tuesday next week, we'll have time to print it and staple it.
And just as an informational piece, Communications Officer Wellens and myself will be attending the National School Public Relations Training. And so we're, we're always looking at ways that we can, you know, best engage, whether it's paper or whether it's electronic or what are, what are other districts doing related to things like this, it can be something that's helpful. I think Communications Officer Wellens or AKA Adele, we also have her pictures of the, the buses.
The buses are fantastic.
Looking at things from a new creative lens is really important. We've got hiring on one side and enrollment on the other, so.
Love it, love it.
It's great. The bus looks great, it really does.
Yeah.
So look for it and if you see it, text me.
I am looking, I.
I know, I was, when I was driving here, I was like.
Do we get, do we get to choose the route?
It rotates the routes on a daily basis, so we'll be on a different route every day.
Okay, I've got a bus stop right in front of my new house, so I'll just keep watching.
With that, Adele and I will both be out during the regular board meeting next Tuesday, but I likely will be participating remotely.
Thank you.
That ends our agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.